We'll go ahead and call the Burlington City Council September 3, 2013, meeting to order. Like to take this opportunity to welcome you here tonight, and hopefully you will return. I'd also remind you to turn off all electronic devices at this time. This time we'll call Councilmember Bob Ward for tonight's invocation.
Please join me in a moment of silent prayer, please.
First item on the agenda is a proclamation from United Way Day, September 4, 2013. At this time I'd recognize Mayor Pro Tem David Huffman.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to read this proclamation for United Way Day. It reads, "Proclamation Proclaiming September 4, 2013 as United Way Day in the City of Burlington." Barrett Thompson, step on up here if you would, okay? Representing the United Way of Alamance County. Whereas, the United Way of Alamance County was founded in 1927 when the Burlington Welfare Federation was organized by a group of businessmen who were concerned about the increasing number of fundraising campaigns in the community. And whereas, this first federated effort made up of five agencies was called a Community Chess Campaign and successfully raised $11,459.43. And whereas, in 1939, the Community Council began as an agency to coordinate all community services such as welfare, health, education, and civic clubs. The Community Council, then known as the Council of Social Agencies, first met at the old Presbyterian Hut behind West Davis Street. And whereas, in 1953, the Community Chess became the United Fund of Alamance County in order to provide a wider federation. And whereas, in 1975, the name United Way of Alamance County was adopted by a vote of the membership to indicate that the organization was more than a fundraising group. It would also be entrusted with overall community planning to evaluate and meet human needs of citizens of all ages and circumstances, budgeting and allocations, and with fiscal responsibility of all monies collected. And whereas, in 1980, United Way of Alamance County was recognized as the most outstanding United Way campaign in North Carolina. And whereas, there are 39 United Way of Alamance County Partner Agencies and Affiliates. And whereas, United Way of Alamance County is improving the lives of one out of every five Alamance County citizens, raising in 2012 and 2013 $1,656,124 in funds. Now therefore, I, David Huffman, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Burlington, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim September 4, 2013 as United Way of Alamance County Day in the City of Burlington, in recognition of 86 years of building a stronger community by focusing on education, income, and health services, and through giving, advocating, and volunteering." Barrett, come on up here. Let me give you the...
Back all the way up there?
Yeah, come on up here.
Okay.
No higher than this. Okay, thank you. How did it run?
Next item on the agenda is the 9/11 Moment of Remembrance, September 11, 2013. At this time I'd recognize Chief Smith. You'd come forward and read the proclamation. Proclamation proclaiming a moment of remembrance on September 11, 2013, in the City of Burlington. Whereas, people across our great nation and the entire globe collectively witnessed an event of immense tragedy on September 11, 2001, when terrorist attacks took the lives of almost 3,000 innocent people on American soil. And whereas, the events of that day instantly transformed the lives of Americans through both personal experience and an unfamiliar sense of individual and national vulnerability. And whereas, an unprecedented historic nexus of Americans arose from the tragedy unifying the country in an outpouring of national pride, selflessness, generosity, courage, and service. And whereas, many of first responders and civilians tirelessly and courageously participated in dangerous rescue and recovery efforts, risking or forfeiting their lives for the safety of others. And whereas, the brave men and women who served in our nation's military were called upon to leave their families and risk their lives to fight and defend America. And whereas, Wednesday, September 11, 2013, will be the 12th anniversary of the 9/11 tragedy. Now therefore, I, Ron E. K. Wall, Mayor of the City of Burlington, do hereby proclaim a moment of remembrance on September 11, 2013, in the City of Burlington. Furthermore, I call our city's first responders, houses of worship, businesses, schools, and citizens alike to join our nation in sounding sirens and ringing bells for one minute at 8:46 a.m. on Wednesday, September 11, 2013, in honor of those who lost their lives and loved ones 12 years ago on that day. This the third day of September, 2013.
Thank you, Mayor Wall, members of council. We appreciate this proclamation. That's a day that affected a lot of people in our country in lots of different ways. The first responders and the citizens and the military, so was the impact on everyone. That's why it's so significant. And we continue to honor those people that gave their lives that day for that tragic event. There are, we're very fortunate, Fire Police, Emergency Services in Burlington to be with a community that supports us, supports the city, supports our emergency first responders. And so, in the event, coincides with this, there are several events that are going on throughout the city. I may miss some, but I have a short list of some that I'm aware of. The Baptist Temple, they'll have a meal for first responders, they've done that for many years. That will be actually on September the 10th. And then, as the proclamation stated, we will do the sirens at the stations. If the units are not on call, they're in service, at any of the fire stations, anyone's welcome to come there. Lots of the police officers in the district and stuff come over. So we'll be there and do that minute, that one minute of the sirens and stuff at 8:46 that morning. Also, Laun Funeral Home is doing a walk. This is the first year of that event that'll begin at 9/11 on that morning. And then they'll start at the funeral home, there'll be a program there, a short program, and then they're gonna do like a memorial walk over to City Park. Also, there's a thing at the YMCA. We'll be with some citizens there at the YMCA that afternoon. And then also, the Christians of the Carolina event in Charlotte, they've come up and offered a bus, it's people within North Carolina. There's a chartered bus for emergency service workers in uniform. You get on the bus for free, you go to Outback and get a free steak, and then you'll go down to the Bojangles Coliseum in Charlotte for a program there. So that's been very nice. And then, actually, A Speedway's doing a fire service thing, or emergency service thing, on the 13th. So we appreciate that, and we appreciate the support of the community and the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Smith. Next, the Code of Ethics. This time we'd recognize City Clerk Renee Ward.
Members of council, it's my responsibility to remind you of your agreements with board conflicts of interest and matters that are before us. At this time, I ask if there are any potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda.
Next item on the agenda is approval of amendments, August 20, 2013, City Council Meeting. Got a motion, a second, all in favor say aye. Aye, pose. Adoption of the agenda.
Will we adopt the agenda as written?
Got a motion, a second, all in favor say aye. Aye, pose. Consent agenda, these items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about the following items, please let us know. Item 1, A, to appoint Benjamin Smedberg to the Tree and Appearance Commission for a term that expires June 30, 2016. B, to set a date of public hearing for September 17, 2013, for approval of the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Program for the Community Development Program, year 2012-13. C, to set a date of public hearing for September 17, 2013, for citizen comments on an amendment to the Physical Year 10-11 Community Development Action Plan. D, to approve the final plat of Macintosh East Lot 3A, the property's located on the east side of Bonner Bridge Parkway, approximately 1,000 feet from University Drive, that's shown on plans by the City of Burlington Engineering Department, dated May 7, 2013, containing one lot E. To approve the final plat of JBFT Sociance LLC, properties located at 151 McArthur Lane, as shown on plans by Boswell Surveyors Incorporated, dated 2 July 23, 2013, and containing two lots F. Budget Amendment 2014-10 Fire Donation is spelled out in your agenda.
Approve the consent agenda.
Got a motion, a second, all in favor say aye. Aye, pose. Got a staff report, intersection and sidewalk improvements. This time we would recognize Nolan Kirkman, Director of Development and Technical Service. Welcome, Mr. Kirkman.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to share with you some of the projects that staff has been working on over the past several years and what we're planning for the future. This map you see here represents pretty much all of our intersection sidewalk projects that we have, like I said, either completed over the last several years or currently funded, or we're gonna be working on. As you may recall from previous presentations, staff has developed scoring mechanisms to enable us to rank these projects, to help us with prioritizing them. And of course, we always look for council input on that as well. One of our, the main things we look at with intersections when we're scoring these, we look at crash data, volume data, and we also look at how well the intersection is performing. We have software that allows us to do that. For the sidewalk scoring, we always look at things such as known footpaths, accident data, proximity to schools, parks and destinations, also what public input we receive when we did the pedestrian plan, as well as social economic data. Those things are all factored in and prioritizing those projects. As we look at these projects to be constructed, one of our main objectives with both of these types of projects is to leverage as much as possible the state and federal funds for our local dollars. And I will say that DOT Division Engineer Mike Mills has been excellent, and our board members in helping us do that. So I just wanted to make that point. First, I'm gonna review the sidewalk projects, and then we'll look at the intersection projects. What you see on the map here, and I want to say an appreciation for Andrew Shore, who's great for working on these projects with GIS stuff. And also, engineering staff and Chris Cloud, they've done a great job helping us assemble all this data. So these are the sidewalk projects. I'm gonna walk you through, the ones in red are the ones that have been completed in the last several years. The ones in green are the ones that are funded, and we are planning to get those done this fiscal year. And the ones in blue are ones we're developing right now to get ready for funding. So let me start with completed sidewalk projects. That's the ones in red. And I'm not gonna go through each one of these individually. If you have a question, let me know. But I will tell you, out of these nine projects, it represents over a million dollars' worth of investment, and the city was able to leverage 75% of that from federal and state funding. So those are good additions to our network. Moving along to the funded sidewalk projects, I will talk about these a little bit. The first one is on Sellers Mill Road, and right here where I'm pointing my cursor, that's Cummings High School and Broadview Middle. This particular sidewalk is a Safe Routes to School funded project, and it's scheduled to be completed sometime next spring, and it'll make connections to existing sidewalks and allow access to the school and also neighborhoods. Also ties in a strategy we have of completing sidewalks along Mevin, which you'll see. The next one is a piece of that strategy, right here in front of the Walmart. This is Graham Hookville Road, and this completes the section. Their sidewalk on the east side, oh, excuse me, the west side, we're completing this on the east back to the entrance. So that's a project for this year. And that project is a community development block grant funding, that's federal funds. Another CDBG project, community development, is a good section here on Mevin Street, and that particular project is scheduled also for the spring construction. That's about $160,000 project federal funds. The last one scheduled for this year is Tarleton Avenue, right here between Church Street and Country Club. I believe that's on the east side, that's what's planned, based on topography, the way things laid out. That is a project that we are gonna use funds that were budgeted for sidewalk improvements in our fiscal year budget. So that's about $80,000 project. All totaled together, it's about $340,000 worth of projects that we're gonna, again, leverage about 75% of state and federal funds, so we feel good about that. All right, finally, let's look at sidewalk projects that we are in the process of developing. That's the ones here in blue. These lines represent about 11 projects that the staff is working on to try to get to the point where we can program them and fund them. We're looking at items such as constructability, what right-of-way is needed, and cost estimates. And all of these projects scored well in the rankings that came out of the pedestrian plan. So once these projects are developed to a good point where they could be funded, we're gonna bring those to council, you guys at some work session at some point, and get some input from you on prioritizing those. So we'll be looking for ways to fund those over the coming years.
No, on the, is it starting on Martin Street, on North Church Street, by the old Western Electric parking lot? Is that where the starting point is?
It's starting at Sellers Mill.
Okay, so it's all the way down that...
And that's Western Electric right there.
Okay, got you.
And continues to the split.
Wow.
The one you got on 62 there on Rawatt, how far is that gonna go? I guess that's Sharp Road.
Come out right here?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, what is that, right there?
Hatch and Ross.
Yeah, that's Hatch Street, actually. Yeah.
So what makes the list, like in blue?
Well, there are probably, coming out of the PED plant, over 100 projects that were identified. So as they were scored, we're just trying to work our way down the list. As we come to those, some score well, but they already have a sidewalk on one side of the street. So sometimes we'll say, if you got one on one side of the street, we may wanna move down the list a little bit to a segment that doesn't have any sidewalks, so at least get one on one side. So we're kinda using the rankings as a guide, not just exactly go score by score. We're trying to, you know, exercise some common sense and judgment on it.
If there's a gap between two existing sidewalks on the same street, trying to fill that?
Trying to fill those two, yeah. So, and if you have any other questions, let me know. Those are the sidewalk projects. Now I'll move on to the intersection projects. These are all the projects, again, same color scheme. The red is what's completed, green is what's funded currently, and the blue is what we're So looking at the, let's look at the red dots again, look at what's been completed. Okay. Again, this goes back a number of years. I'm not gonna, again, go through each one of these, but it represents a little less than a million dollars' worth of investment, and about 80% of that come through, came through federal and state funding. A lot of that was through our funds, as you recall, that came through years ago. So those are good investment and good leverage for the city. That was the American Recovery Reinvestment Act, yeah. Yeah. So if you have any questions, those...
Just hit those, Nolan, real quickly, Skilman.
This one right here was one that the state funded. It was a matter of installing a traffic signal and adding a left-turn lane at Royal Retreat. This is Joe Davidson Park and St. Mark's, and thus helped with some of the traffic from Alamance Crossing. This particular project was an era project, stimulus dollars, that added this left-turn lane right here, which was nice because it helped with traffic flow. Before, these left turners didn't know whether people in this lane were going left or through. So that helped. We also...
Age Wood and South Church Street, yeah.
Yes. Gold's Gem is right over here. And we also tightened up this radius right here, because there was a lot of accidents with people coming in and into this intersection, a lot of right-turn accidents. So that accidents, they've gone down quite a bit. This was a widening that we did during resurfacing. We did that in-house to save some funds. We just did little bits of widening here to get solid three lanes right through that section to help with traffic flow. This particular one was at Delaney and South Church, that's the Wendy's right there. And we added, and the Google Maps doesn't have it updated, but we added a right-turn lane. That was done recently with the resurfacing funds, as well as some of our budgeted funds for intersection improvements. This particular project here is, represents the O'Neill, Rockwood, and South Church project where the right-turn lane was added. That was stimulus dollars, era funds that supported that one as well.
Back up a second, just for my information.
All right.
We had a problem on that with people making a U-turn right there.
Yeah.
We corrected that, right?
I'm going off my recollection, but I believe we petitioned the state for no U-turn sign. I think that was installed.
Yeah, thank you.
See, Rockwood-O'Neill, proposed on it, go all the way through.
Well, those are, what we don't have on this list is the large-scale multimillion-dollar projects. Those are TIP-type projects. This was one, Maple and Chapel Hill. This is the Biscuitville right here, KFC. What we did there was, and this really helped with stimulus funds, we added, we have two through lanes there now, as you can see, which really helps traffic, it used to back up quite a bit. But we also fine-tuned the right-turn lane there. So that helped, and I believe that's almost all of them. Had a couple more right here. This one represents a little bit of widening that was done due to some drainage problems, and some curb and gutter put in to try to control that flow right there on Highland Avenue. I believe that was CDBG funds, I have to check my notes on that one. This one was a state put in a traffic signal on Fisher and Fulton. This is the gas station, convenience store right here. So that's kind of a...
How about the other intersection there, the one right below, the next road down, heading towards downtown? We tried for years to get one there, Richmond and Fisher.
Oh, Richmond, well, it was, Richmond and Apple has come up many times, and we have continually petitioned the state for that. The latest on that, I believe we have petitioned them again, and we're waiting to hear back from them, so...
We also have petitioned on Richmond and Fisher, and we didn't meet the warrants that...
Two times.
Oh, on this one, okay. Yeah, that one may not have met warrants. I believe this one met warrants when you factored in 85%iles speeds, because Chris runs all those warrant, Chris Cloud, Traffic Engineer, runs all that data, which is nice. We can run the warrants ourselves, and we'll know whether it meets warrants or not before we submit it for approval. So those are completed projects, projects that are funded at this point. We have three of those, or excuse me, four. The first one is Sellers Mill and North Church Street. And again, Broadview and Cummings are down here to the south. What this project entails is between Church Street and North Mevin Street, we're actually adding a right-turn lane at both intersections, both here approaching Mevin and approaching North Church Street. And that should really help the signal timing, operation of those signals. And we're doing this, the city staff, we engineered, did the design, they acquired a small portion of right-of-way, and our city staff extended a curb line, and that only costs all that about $12,000. And the state has committed to the balance of that to come in and do the milling, resurfacing, striping, to finish the project. And that's gonna cost them about $75,000, so that's another good leverage, I think, of city dollars. The next two are, I won't get into great detail because they're both on the 54 corridor, and as you recall, the 54 corridor, which, this is Maple Avenue right here, and this is O'Neill. There are other improvements we've identified as needed at those intersections, but those, we hope, will be addressed as part of the NC-54 widening project. Now, the NC-54 widening project, you may recall, was scheduled for right-of-way in '15, and construction in '17. But as you guys know, the legislature approved a different funding formula for transportation projects. So that project, along with other regional projects, will have to get rescored and reprogrammed. Until probably sometime next year, we won't know where that falls, we'll just have to wait and see. So we're hopeful it stays on schedule, we just, we don't know. The last project funded for this year is, this is University Drive and Boone Station. Of course, you got University Commons over here with the Target. What this project entails is adding, right now there's a through right. We're gonna take the right and create a separate lane for the right that allows two through lanes to enter into the University Commons site. We have been working with Casto, who's the management company of University Commons, on a design to try to help this flow better, and hopefully they will, they will do that at some point. That's a private intersection, they have to make those improvements. But we have been working with them on that. But another thing that'll be...
So you're putting a new lane on the far right-hand side of there, right?
Correct, yeah. It'll be a right-turn lane, and that will be another through lane, because you already have one there. The other thing that'll be corrected with this is, as you come, this is St. Mark's, as you come through this intersection, this through lane, you're now in a left-turn lane. So we're gonna correct that, and you actually be coming through, this will actually be a through lane. And so you won't be stuck in a left-turn lane when you go through the intersection. Something else we wanted to address.
And gentlemen, as you recall, especially during the holiday season, that's probably a major backup area. It will come back from the intersection here, the university, all the way back to the Boone Station area.
St. Mark's, yeah.
Not uncommon at all.
Yeah, at times, it fluctuates, micro peaks, it will back all the way up to this intersection. We've actually seen it go through for a period of time, and it'll heal and come back to here. But we, that's why we're trying to get more capacity going through the intersection. And we're really hoping Casto will make some adjustments here, because we wanna get a better distribution of through movements. We don't want them all stuck in the left-through, if you know what I'm saying.
Have they given you any feedback?
Yeah, they have. They've been very receptive. We massage the design with them, we explain to them it's their design, because it's their intersection, but we just tried to help them. And basically, what the design would do is, when you come through now, if you're in the, well, this will be a through lane, okay? So when you come through, right now you're stuck in the right-turn lane that takes you this way. And what we did was, we looked at the volumes, and the way that the volumes are distributed, about, not quite half the cars, but almost half the cars turn left here to go to Chick-fil-A, McDonald's, Target. The other half, or the majority of the other half go through the intersection. A small amount of folks would turn right, like I think 10%. Some of those maybe turn right, because they're stuck in that lane. So what we're, what we propose is, when you come through this intersection, the lane will be re-struck, the lane, so that when you come through in this lane, you will actually be in this left-turn lane. So you're basically being forced to turn left, instead of having somebody forced to turn right. The other lane would come through. You wouldn't have a dedicated right. So we're trying to... So, we're trying to funnel people where we know they're trying to go. And I, I'm hoping they'll do that. They've asked us who the contractor information is for this project, so that's a good sign.
What's the timeline on that?
That project is scheduled to, it's supposed to start, I believe the project is available now. DOT has let the contract, so it can start, you know, anytime.
Right before Christmas.
Well, we worked with DOT on that, so the, the construction end date is, is before Thanksgiving. So, yeah. We told them we didn't want that going in. That, that would not be good. That was a good question.
And I'm not saying good or bad, but there's one common factor in, in our traffic congestion guys. I'm not saying how it reflects on the communities. It's fast food restaurants draws people. You can tell that the intersection there at Church and where Wendy's is, the street.
Delaney.
That goes back absolutely to school. Two of them revolves around a Biscuitville. One at Church and O'Neill, a second one at Maple and Chapel Hill. This one here, so the traffic flow for, for certain of these areas are, there's, there's reasons.
This, this intersection is unique. It has a ma, almost a million and a half square foot of retail getting serviced by one signal. And that's a, you don't see that all over the state. You see it in some places, but that's, that's critical. So, that's why you see so many lanes there. It's, it's designed for, for peak times. This particular project, city staff did the design. We acquired a little bit of right-of-way that was needed. We worked with the utilities and moving some utilities for the contractor. Costs us about fifteen thousand, and DOT is gonna do the balance, which is about two hundred thousand. Originally on this one, we thought our share was gonna be around eighty-five, but they were able to get additional funds. Again, Mike Mills and company, it's really been good to work with.
No, with the new allocation on the DOT side with, with funds for intersection improvements, with, with the new proposal, what does that leave the, the district engineers now?
Well, the challenge is, they had small construction funds, which is a pot of money that was more of their discretion, and the board members had more discretion with those funds. Those funds have basically gone away. My understanding is, you can still get projects done, but you have to actually, the board member has to go to the Board of Transportation and, you know, petition those funds. So, we'll be relying on our board member to help us with that.
So, under the new system, and Bob Ward and I, we're in the TAC, and we've, what, where, the funds for these sort of projects in the future, and you're, I know you're talking about using local dollars to leverage. What state funds, which, which category do these fall in?
They're funds controlled by either the Board of Transportation, or I believe legislatures, that we would have to work with.
Basically, come out, the funding would be maintenance funding.
Now, Mike Mills may have something, you know, but it's not gonna be significant like I don't think it was in the past.
Well, the way it used to be in the past is Mike Fox, who represented this district, had, I, I would say seven hundred and fifty thousand. I don't know exactly what the number was. But at his discretion, he could help four or five different counties with projects like this. And that money now is disappeared, and money is in Raleigh now. The Mike Fox, and I can't think of the lady's name.
Cheryl McQuary, yeah.
She has this district now, and she has no money to help in different projects across her districts.
So, if the, the three large categories are statewide.
Regional.
Regional, and then.
Division.
Division. So, do these funds come up underneath any of those, or these are?
Not, not these projects. These are smaller-scale projects. The TIP-type projects are the ones that would be competing for, for those dollars.
But I still think Mike, I mean, yeah, Mike Mills has some, some dollars to do work with.
That's what we're hoping, yeah.
Because he's been very instrumental in getting a lot of things done here in Alamance County, so, and the city of Burlington.
They, they've really worked well with us, guys.
Well, finally, the projects that we are developing are the, the blue dots that you see here on the screen. There are a number of those. There's a Graham Hupdell Road. We had a study done through the NPO on that one with significant cost to, to make the improvements. We're trying, as a staff, to break those down into smaller projects that we can work with the state to try to get done in pieces. Church and Fifth, we're trying to develop that one where we can have left-turn lanes opposing each other on Church Street. So, we're trying to get that to a point, yeah.
That's surprising.
Yeah. We, I know you, we've heard of that one. Front and Rockwood, we've, that meets signal warrants. We've passed that on to the DOT. And we're, it's in their hands. We're waiting to hear back from them. Another one, we're trying to get, this is Edgewood and Shatterbrook, really need some left-turn lanes on Edgewood. So, we're trying to develop that project to a point to see what it would cost and what right-of-way would be needed. This is a project we've been working on at Forestale. We're designing this in-house to add a right-turn lane. You get quite a bit of backup here on Forestale, especially during peak times.
You know what would help that even more so would change some of the dynamics on the stoplight. Timing of that's awful, and the other thing that's awful there is, if you're coming from Kmart towards Forestale, that blind spot as you come over, I mean, it seems like to me we could do something about the.
Oh, you're talking about the, oh, you're talking about just literally the grade.
The grade of that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Well, I know DOT and Chris has been more involved with this. They've considered doing some protected left turns, even on this, on the side street, to try to help. Because I'm, I'm sure there's been a couple accidents there. But the signal timing, beautiful thing about our signal timing is, if you're on Seventy and Church Street, you're gonna flow. If you're on the side street, quite frankly, you're the one that pays the price. Because we're trying to move the twenty-five, thirty thousand cars a day that are flowing up and down Church Street. And so, we have to hold it green on, on the Church Street. And the folks on the side street typically pay the price to get that coordination. Otherwise, you just, if you're trying to, you know, give everybody the time they want, you, you just will not have coordination on the main drag. So, that's always a challenge for us, because all these signals are tied together down Church Street, on the west side, and then on the east side, they're tied together as well. So, um, let me see here, a couple more. This is the Huffamille southbound, I, I eighty-five southbound ramp. It needs a, another left turn based on analysis we've done at, at peak times in the mornings. It can back up significantly. It's significant cost. DOT hasn't found any funds for that one yet. About four hundred thousand dollars for that one. And then the last one is St. Mark's and South Church Street. And this is the intersection, probably one of our most congested intersections in town. We've, we're gonna be studying this, well, we actually just finished the study through the NPO. And we've got that broken down into smaller projects. And we have actually requested a, a project through the board for that one. That's right here, the food line, the Rite Aid. The challenge with this intersection, and I'm wrapping up, but you really need dual throughs in both directions. So, one of the things we're looking at doing through the NPO possibly this year is studying the entire stretch of St. Mark's and Wimpson, from Alamance Crossing area all the way up into Elon for a potential future widening project.
What we found is the University Drive, the Elon students is part of that because some of its construction of apartments, Williamson continues to be a, a, a heavy movement of traffic from university south. So, that intersection there is maybe the most congested intersection in the city. And the one you mentioned on Huffamille Road coming off the interstate, maybe not the same, but if you, if you're coming from the east and on Alamance Road and sixty-two, you come off that intersection there. You got a wide, you got a couple of turn signals. The one here coming off of Huffamille Road, they're probably at five-thirty, at certain times of the day, the left-hand turn, you, you, I don't think we're backing back up on the interstate, but we're getting close.
Yeah, we've, we've gotten close in the mornings. That's always really scary. You see cars backing up.
Getting close there.
Yeah. So, as with the sidewalk projects, when we get these developed to a point, we feel like they could be funded, we'll bring those to you for priority and input. So, that's pretty much where we're at with all these projects.
Any questions, comments, Mr. Kirkman? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That gets us to public comment period. We have none. Gets us, before we get to city council comments, note here says that Amy Nelson's family's in the audience. So, we appreciate you being here. Your, your daughter's done an outstanding job for us, so hopefully you'll get to visit more often. Thank you for being here. Husband?
Oh, that was.
I'm sorry, your husband. I didn't get, that's not on my notes here. I'm sorry.
That was a good line. I write that one down.
Makes you, that make you feel free, yardage? Good job. All right, let's move on quickly before we get in trouble.
I wouldn't want to meet him in the parking lot after you.
City Council comments, any comment?
Mayor, I would like to extend an apology to council staff and fellow citizens for my absence during last council meeting. I did have a medical episode on, on the way here from Winston-Salem and had to spend about eight hours in emergency room. So, it was a pretty eventful evening, but I do apologize. I did return to a normal schedule Friday of that week, and somebody asked me today how I was doing. I said I'm ninety percent better. I still reserve ten percent for when my wife asks me to do something around the house. That's what I'm saying, but, but I, I do apologize. I just wanted to make that known. Thank you.
Well, we appreciate that, and we're glad you're, you're back with us, and hopefully you're feeling much better. Any other comments?
Jim, is okay. We talked about we were trying to locate you during the meeting that night.
Well, I was impressed that you guys cared about me. My wife did.
Well, the other part of that story is that, what happened to your cellphone?
Yeah, it was not with me.
Yeah, it was not.
It was not in my.
His wife ended up texting me about twelve fifteen the next morning, so, anyway, we're glad you're back. Just a couple of comments before. Did you have to come in? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I would, I, I would, and I think I've spoken with each one of you on, kind of on the side, just asking you about this. We have this rezoning coming up. It's to go back in front of P and Z, I believe, at the end of September for the property that, and I'm not sure who the petitioner is again, but it's the, on the University Drive right near Seventy. I, I'm, I've had an opportunity to talk with the, the attorney for the petitioner, as well as some of the other folks that are around that area. I know the mayor has met with different groups of folks that are, have any stakeholders out there. One thing that I would ask this council to, to consider doing it, and, and that is, I, I know we're not talking about the same property. We're not talking about the property that's right on the corner, at this time or not, of the corner of University and Seventy. That was the subject matter of the last rezon out in this area that, of two or three years ago. But we're talking about the adjoining property to it, and it's, I believe it's the same outfit that's moving to a developed property. A, as we look at this, I would ask that the council entertain all this, entertain this whole site. I recognize it's two, two different parcels of land. And when I say entertain, it, entertain rezoning the property on the corner as well. As, at least as to the conditional zoning, the restrictions, putting the same restrictions as far as some of the subject, prohibitive subject matters that can be developed on those properties. You know, namely, for one, a, a gas station has been brought up two or three different times now. And each time I, we end up talking with people out in that area. I recognize Mr. Brown has taken that kind of off the table, or at least he's indicated, on the property that they are requesting, they've taken that use out, off the table. I would think that we, the council, and I would hope the council would entertain putting those same sort of prohibitive restrictive uses on the, the total property all the way to the corner of Seventy and, and University. The reason I bring that up now is because I know this has to go to P and Z. P and Z meets the third, third week, fourth week of every month, and meet in September. And that, they will be entertaining Mr. Brown's property at that point in time.
It's already been through.
If he is changing his, it's my understanding he was changing his request and, and, and adding more restrictions to it. Is that not what he was, was doing on appeal?
It will not go back through P and Z.
Okay. Is September, so that's been set for October seventeenth?
Yes.
Is that the only, is that the only shot at P and Z if we were to do something like this that we would have left before that October seventeen meeting? It is, isn't it? So, that's why I would, I would ask this council to at least give it some thought about considering the whole block, not just what's been placed before us now, but also on the corner. And it just seems like we're, all we're doing is begging for these, these matters to continue to come up, keep these people riled up out in that area. And if we're gonna be consistent, I, I don't see why we wouldn't go ahead and entertain rezoning the whole, whole area out there at this point in time.
In, in effect, you're asking for this to go back to P and Z for the recommendations to come back to us, right?
That's, that's why I'm bringing this up now. That's correct.
Is, is that a form of a motion?
Can I make one comment before, before we get into the motion? As I understand it, what you're suggesting would require conditional use, rezoning as to the elimination of gas stations as a use. That particular condition would have to be agreed to by the landowner, as well as by the council. It's not something the council could arbitrarily propose on, on the property. So, just bring that to your attention.
For conditional zoning?
For conditional use only, yes.
Well, another way, I guess, of skinning it would be to turn around and zone it to O and I so that where there is no gas, the ghost, gas station option there. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Is that something that'd go back to P and Z as well?
But it would not require the landowner to agree with.
It would not. The council could always initiate a rezoning of a parcel on their own initiative and send it to P and Z for report and back into the council in public hearing.
My whole point in doing this is I think we ought to consider it at the same time. And I know we've, we've put Mr. Brown in his outfit over till October, and whatever it takes to get it to the.
So, would that require amendment to the land use plan?
No. No, that would be a fair up rezoning.
That would be consistent with the land, land use plan that we have now. It would require a rezoning.
For that quarter.
And so, if, if that's what it takes to rezon it to O and I to get to, to avoid that possibility, I would suggest that the, the council entertain that.
Do we have to make that decision tomorrow to move forward?
I would prefer we at least have some time to independently think through this.
And, and, and let me say this, that's, that's fine. That may require that we put off the public hearing from the seventeenth to do that, but.
So, what you're saying is the, the, I mean, it's sufficient to say that at some point that property's gonna be developed, but rather than have contentious development plans.
Exactly.
Go ahead and lay the groundwork for what is likely to be approved.
Exactly.
Well, even if, even if you were to bump it over to the second meeting in this month, that would still have time to go to P and Z and come back here at the first meeting in October to be set on for the same time, the October seventeenth, for, you know, the requests that's on our table now.
Well, can I ask that this be put in on the agenda for the next meeting for us to entertain at that point in time?
That give you enough time, Congressman Butler?
That's good, good of me.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other comments? A couple of comments and a reminder, the council will conduct open forms of community input on the following dates and locations. September fifth, Fairchild Community Center, seven o'clock. September twelfth, North Park's Automa Building, seven o'clock. September nineteenth, Granotl Senior Center, seven o'clock. September twenty-sixth, Turntown Middle School, seven o'clock. Freeze, Waste, Recycling and Paper Shredding, Saturday, September twenty-first, nine AM to two PM. Burlington Carousel Festival, Saturday, September twenty-first, ten AM to six PM. And Sunday, September twenty-second, one PM to six PM. And Family Fun Day, September seventh, nine AM at North Park. Again, I apologize to the Nelson family. I'm, I'm sorry. I apologize. I will take the credit for that mistake then. Any other comments before council? If not, entertain the motion, adjourned.
Don't move.